Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education Regular Meeting. Has this meeting been properly noticed? Please call the roll.
Here.
Eliasson, Evans?
Here.
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 Olmsted. We have a call. Okay. We're going to be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by students from Smith Elementary, and then they're going to follow up with a presentation for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My name is Marcy Gunlock, the principal of Smith Elementary, and we are very pleased to be here tonight. Understand that it's your second board meeting of the month. We have been invited and have the opportunity to do a little presentation if we would like. And so, we have an exciting evening coming up, and we would like to invite all of you to that. We have our spring concert coming up on Tuesday, April 4th, at 6:00 at Alberta Kimball. We did some switch sheets and have now moved our concert to a spring concert. This will be our second year in a row for that, and allows us to do some different types of music and some different themes. So, we do have a theme for this year. We have Mr. Hillary here with us tonight, our fabulous music teacher at Smith. So, he'll talk to you a little bit about this year's concert theme, and then we just have a little sneak preview by some of our fabulous 5th grade students.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Gunlock. So, one of the neat things about being able to do a spring concert is we get to be a little bit more creative with our song choices. And this year, I thought it'd be neat if we did a TV theme where we do all songs from TV shows. And apart from just having like really fun, cool songs to learn, it's also been kind of neat because all of these songs are made for a very specific purpose. So, when we learn some things, you could say, you know, "In this SpongeBob episode, why did SpongeBob sing how he was feeling? Why didn't he just, you know, tell us how he was feeling?" Or, you know, "Why didn't Will-" Will Smith could've just told us how his story goes. He didn't have to put it into a theme song. So, "Why do you think he did it like that? Why is it that way?" So, it's been really neat on that level. And, yeah, it's been a lot of fun, too, so far. April 4th at 6:00 PM will be our concert. And now, we'll get our students up here to sing a little bit of a preview for us. So, come on up.
Students, if you want to introduce yourselves first?
Yep.
That would be great.
Let's go. Let's just go right down the line. So, that's like, yeah, you didn't get in there? Okay. Go ahead.
My name is Aden Corrigan.
My name's Gondolyn Kepke.
My name's Grace Sturrie.
My name's Renata Hyler.
Good. And today, we'll be singing the theme song from Gilligan's Island.
Just sit right back and hear a tale, tale, a fateful trip that started from this traffic port aboard this tiny ship. The mate was a mighty sailing man, skipper brave and sure. Our passengers set sail that day for a three-hour tour, a three-hour tour. The weather started getting rough, the tiny ship was tossed. If not for the courage of fearless crew, the middle would be lost, the middle would be lost. The ships set round the shore of this uncharted desert isle with Gilligan, the skipper, too, the millionaire and his wife, the movie star, the professor and Mary Ann here on Gilligan's Isle. So, this is a tale of castaways, they're here for a long, long time. They'll have to make the best of things, it's an uphill climb. The first mate and the skipper, too, will do their very best to make the others comfortable in the tropic island nest. Gilligan's is here for a long, long time. The Robins and Caruso, as primitive as can be. So, join us here each week, my friends, you're sure to get a smile from seven stranded castaways here on Gilligan's Isle.
I need to say that I appreciate having the note of this concert because the calendar provided to me by the music department had me attending a concert in December that wasn't. In fact, I needed- I called Mrs. Gunlock and said, "What happened to the concert?" It was on my calendar, and I show up for concerts that don't even exist. And that evening, only the two stage technicians and I were there, and they had the same message to be there. So, we were all set to go. So, we're going to be really set to go in the first week of April.
And I'm glad you chose the second and third season theme instead of the first when they mentioned Professor and Mary Ann. That was the good thing.
Instead of "And the rest."
"And the rest," yes, yes.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right. We'll just jump right into the superintendent's report.
Sure. Good evening. We have especially long, I think I have 25 slides and 25 pages of good news, but this is prime time of the year to have lots of good news in the school district. First of all, Lakeside Elementary families recently enjoyed a February family night where they were served dinner, compliments of the Olive Garden, and Lakeside PTO learned about the school improvement goals and the progress being made, and then moved throughout the building to do literacy and math activities at Lakeside. Global Academy Level III students at Oshkosh West have become a pal partner in learning with Lakeside Elementary students, and Global Academy students have visited Lakeside three times this year. And that last visit, they spent time teaching elementary students about the New Year's holidays and other countries throughout the world. Lakeside students enjoy looking and look at their pal visit. So, lots of partnership between elementary and high school students. Congratulations to Oshkosh North Senior Jacob Luft for advancing to the finalist standing for the National Merit Scholarship Program. Congratulations to these Oshkosh North High School athletes who advanced to state-level competition in swimming, wrestling, and bowling. I should note that I believe the young lady in the competition in winning is the daughter of our district internal mail carrier, who proudly informed me of that level of success. Congratulations to Oshkosh North High School Boys and Girls Bowling Teams, who qualified this year with the state. This is the first time in North's history that the girls have gone to state in bowling. Oshkosh West Academy for Global Studies students, as a part of their World Cultures Unit, were studying how religions impact the regions of the Middle East. The students took field trips to see three local religious organizations to learn more about religious similarities and differences. Oshkosh North students read to, interestingly enough, Reed Elementary students during their Read Across America Week. Congratulations to the Oshkosh West High School Table Tennis Team, who brought back their fourth state trophy in five years and have become the most feared competitor in the state. The team this year consisted of 37 students who participated and placed third in the state of Wisconsin. Webster Stanley Elementary School student, 4th graders, recently toured the State Capitol Building in Madison, where they learned several interesting facts about the building. They also toured the Wisconsin Historical Society Museum, where they learned about the fur trade era, lead mining, and the first settlers in Wisconsin. A few days later, Representative Gordon Hens visited their class to talk about Wisconsin government. Webster Elementary students celebrated Read Across America by doing activities each day based around Dr. Seuss, and some of which included Hat Day, Pyjama Day, Crazy Hair Day, and Socks Day. Athletes from UWO visited and read to students, and school principal Mrs. Galassi read in each classroom. Congratulations to the district's Executive Director of Business Services, Sue Schnorr, for receiving the highest legacy honor of the Wisconsin Association of School Business Officials, Wesbo. Sue was awarded the Wallace E. Zastro Award for her career accomplishments, outstanding contributions, and years of service in active- being active in Wesbo, members who displayed visionary leadership, commitment, and dedication. Congratulations, Sue. I hold my breath all the time because when you have that kind of laudatory expression, it almost would sound like a retirement end. We please know, please. Oshkosh West High School Qualifiers, congratulations to the Oshkosh West Gymnastics and Wrestlers, who qualified for WIAA state competition. Great job for their West High School students. Carl Trager Middle School students, 6th graders, performed the musical "Need a Vacation" for the parents and community members. Nearly 200 students were screened by the Oshkosh Early Learning Diagnostic Team and Specialist as a part of the annual Oshkosh Early Learning Child Development Days and Family Fair. The goal of the screening is to provide early intervention services for our students who might need- might benefit from additional support and provide community resources and program information for families. Thanks to all who partnered in this project and for their great success. It's- it is really a special occasion to see, for the first time, those very small children coming with their parents to our Recreation Department Building. Congratulations to the Oshkosh North team, who placed second at the Finance and Investment Challenge Bowl at Fox Valley Technical College in Appleton. They qualified for state competition and will compete in Milwaukee on May 17th. Oshkosh North Community's students are working on several projects, including learning about proper etiquette in business and formal dining, building their knowledge on why we eat, what we eat, based on events, people, and scientific advances, and preparing to raise awareness during the National Public Health Week, where they will learn about what they have learned and what we've learned in the researching in the 20th century decades. All of the Oshkosh area 8th grade, district 8th grade band students recently received a visit from UW Oshkosh, Dr. Lee Ian Licto, who gave each band a clinical session for the pieces they would perform at Bandorama. Bands were judged by Dr. Licto on the night of the performance. The honor bands made up of students from each school, who were chosen to be a part of the band and also performed that evening. The students did a wonderful job, and a special thanks to Dr. Licto as a parent, as well as a member of the community and a professor at the university. 7th grade South Park Middle School student, art students, have been working hard to create a black and white portrait of an inspirational role model in their life. And those activities, and very soon, we're going to be seeing lots of the annual art exhibits, and this is one of those that I'm sure will make those- that exhibit very popular. South Park Media Center is hosting March Madness, where students will vote for their all-time favorite book character. Voter turnout this year has increased dramatically due to each student having a Chromebook available at the middle school. And thanks to the community for that support to make that expansion possible. In celebration for reaching PBI's goal, Roosevelt students were able to hear performances by the Oshkosh West High School Drum Line, and a few lucky helpers were even able to participate by playing along. Nothing is finer for an elementary child than to be able to beat on a drum. What an exciting event. Shapiro STEM Academy students are working on creating their school garden with Growing Oshkosh. Plans are being integrated into the STEM curriculum, and Shapiro wishes to thank Growing Oshkosh for all their help with this project. Shapiro's Student Council sponsored a coin-driven fundraiser, where they raised $122 for the Oshkosh Humane Society to help homeless animals currently housed at the shelter. A group of 6th grade students at Carl Trager Middle School have been busy fundraising for a great cause. Their efforts were sparked by the Oshkosh West Student Service Dog, who died unexpectedly. Students held two bake sales and collected cash donations totaling over $500 to help the family with costs associated with adopting a new service dog. The momentum led to a second fundraiser to collect books for community locations. Over 1,000 books were collected to be distributed to Aurora Mercy Medical Center, Kristine Anne Center, Harbor House, and other community locations. Again, congratulations to Carl Trager 6th grade, 6th graders. Oshkosh West Bowling Team qualified for the state tournament also. Congratulations to the Oshkosh West Bowling Team for qualifying for the state this year and placing fifth. Additional congratulations to Haley Stubber, who qualified as a singles bowler and finished in the top five. Listed here are several of the activities that have been participating in the last few weeks. Again, a very busy time. Today, I had the pleasure of visiting four elementary and one middle school, and the excitement that is going on, particularly at elementary, with our new math program. Teachers are celebrating, enjoying that experience, and sharing in every location their joy of working with bridges in math. It's just really exciting to watch that, and I hear from parents as well that it's making sense to them. And when you have people happy about math and teaching math, that's really exciting. So, although we have a high school math teacher in back who expects it should be exciting all the way through, right? We'll now turn it over to Dr. Kim Brown, who will outline for you a little bit about the information regarding the community image campaign and kind of do our technology remedial session from last time.
Correct. Since last time, we were not able to share the video that was put together, and this is a demo. It was not made by STUR. It was put together so that businesses could have an idea of where we are going. So, without much ado, I'm going to share that video with you and then tell you a little bit about some of the work that STUR wants to do around metrics. Can you turn that on? And that is just a little taste. Oh. So, that gives you a taste. Doesn't it just make you feel hardened, though, to go, "Yeah, we live in Oshkosh, and we have a really cool community that we really do need to share and show off"? I had also shared with you that STUR had some metrics that they were going to be putting together, and some of the things that they talked about was to monitor and track relevant media activity, and that was going to be not just in Oshkosh, but the surrounding communities and any competitors, to track what social media is and what's happening. They also talked about, "We're going to be rolling out different campaign monthly activities, and so, they're going to be monitoring those pieces and what's happening with that." And then, they're also going to do a return on investment ratio on the actual activity and the projected value. So, some of those are the things that they had shared with us that they would be working on. Thank you. Excuse me. Could we get a list of those in writing for those of us who can't remember all the things you just shared, which sound really good? Absolutely. I can share that with the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Okay. Are there any other- can we turn the sound back down again? There's an echo. Yeah. Are there any other reports by committee chairs? Yep.
I have a report on the Policy and Governance Committee, which met on Thursday, March 16th. We had a couple of agenda items. One dealt with memorials and commemoration of school facilities. That policy, as written, combines, in my opinion, at least, a couple of different ideas, and we talked about ways that we may want to change that. So, we laid it over for the next meeting so that the committee members could review that. We spent a good deal of time talking about the employee handbook proposed changes. There is one handbook now used for all employees, and the purpose of doing this update to the handbook was to simplify and correct outdated information, assure the district is legally compliant in processes and language, make grammatical adjustments, and unite OASD staff by being consistent across all groups of employees. Our mission is focused on student learning and achievement, as students are the reason that we are here. Operational definitions were added, board policy information was updated, redundant information was eliminated, and the format of the book will be reorganized alphabetically to make it easier to use. This handbook will continue to be a work in progress, as every year, we would expect that it would be changed and updated. However, staff should find this updated version to be more user-friendly. Executive Director of Human Resources, Lori Myron, discussed the changes with the committee. Lori's met with administrators, as well as employee group leaders from OEA, OPEA, and NTEA to review the changes. Right now, the handbook is scheduled to come to the full board for its approval at the April 26, 2017 Board Meeting. And our next meeting is scheduled for April 6 at 10:00 AM. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anybody here from- that would like to speak to us on a non-agenda-related public forum or on an agenda-related public forum? All right. So, let's go right into consent agenda or resolution agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and will be voted on separately. I've been asked to pull 6B, number 9, number 13, number 14, and number 15. Is there anything else? Okie doke. The board will consider approval of 1, minutes of February 22, 2017 Regular Board Meeting; 2, minutes of February 22, 2017 Executive Session of Regular Board Meeting; 3, minutes of March 8, 2017 Regular Board Meeting; 4, minutes of March 8, 2017 Executive Session and Regular Board Meeting; 5, bills payable; 6A is personnel appointments, resignations, and salary schedule; 7, final notice of non-renewals for temporary contracts; 8, community image collaborative campaign; 10, summer school program plan; 11, pupil nondiscrimination self-evaluation report; 12, expansion of the current site-based services in the district, universal mental health screenings at both high schools, and the addition of clinical therapy services at Oshkosh West High School.
So, move.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Eliasson, Evans?
Hey, no, no, yes.
Hi, Garner. Hi.
Garner, hi. Herzog?
Hi.
Herzog, hi. Lumberger?
Hi.
Lumberger, hi. Olmsted?
Hi.
Carlin?
Hi.
Carlin, hi. Motion carried.
Okay. So, 6B. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve the retirements filed with the Secretary of the Board of Education.
So, move.
So, we have a discussion? We need a second, sorry.
Second.
Now, we can have a discussion.
Thank you, Mrs. Garner. I had asked that this item be pulled. This represents a list of retirements that are coming forward as of this date, and they include Thomas Becker, an EBD teacher at North High, Deborah Gunlock, an ELL teacher assistant at North High, Judy McGillis, a school counselor at Jefferson, Doug Michie, a science teacher at North, Roberta Michie, an SLD teacher at Oakwood, Jackie Sandin, an elementary music teacher at Oak Lawn in Oakwood, Kirby Schultz, principal of Oakwood, and Jennifer Teske, kindergarten teacher at Carl Trager Elementary. These people have donated upwards of 25, 30, 40, 30 years, not 40, 30 years, to this school district, and I think they should be commended for the time and effort and energy they have put into making a positive difference in the lives of the students whose life that they've touched. One of these individuals was a student in my class at the university many years ago, and I'm delighted to see that he spent, I believe, his entire career in Oshkosh, in the Science Department at North High. I just want to thank these people and the others they represent, who make this a great school district. And it's about the people, and these people should be recognized. So, I just want to personally thank them for their service to our children and our district.
Thank you, Barb.
We should just note the fact that according to Human Resources' calculation, there are potentially another number of retirees that could be coming between now and June. There are some 100 individuals that are eligible for retirement this year in the school district. So, this is the beginning list of what I assume will be a longer list in the future.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Okay. Please call the roll.
Evans?
Hi.
Evans, hi. Garner?
Hi.
Garner, hi. Herzog?
Hi.
Herzog, hi. Lumberger?
Hi.
Lumberger, hi. Olmsted?
Hi.
Carlin?
Hi.
Carlin, hi. Eliasson? Motion carried.
Okay. Resolution number 9. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve the Communication Director position filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education.
So, move.
Second.
Okay. Discussion.
Mrs. Garner, I had asked this one be pulled because I had asked at the previous meeting for a clarification under job responsibility, item number 2, to facilitate the planning and creating and executing of all communications, rather than assuming that the person would do those. And I want to thank Dr. Brown and others who made that possible. As I've said before, we can never have enough good chocolate, good communication, and good professional development, and communication is really the responsibility of all of us, not just the Communications Director position. So, I appreciate that change and look forward to moving ahead with that.
Sharing that change. We appreciate that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right. Please call the roll.
Garner?
Hi.
Garner, hi. Herzog?
Hi.
Herzog, hi. Lumberger?
Hi.
Lumberger, hi. Olmsted?
Hi.
Carlin?
Hi.
Carlin, Eliasson, Evans?
Hi.
Evans, hi. Motion carried.
Okay. Resolution number 13. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve Cardinal Construction as a contractor for the renovations of the former pool, new flex space area at South Park Middle School, as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education.
So, move.
Second.
Discussion. Yes, please.
I had also asked that this one be pulled. The Facilities and Finance Committee had reviewed this. I believe the board reviewed it. It's been a little bit- there's been a little bit of a lag time to get to this point, but this is an important item for South Park School, and I just thought it would be important for people who listen to the board meeting and wonder what we vote on when we have the consent agenda item. So I just thought a very quick overview would let the public know what this item deals with. Thank you.
Jim Fox did a presentation on the board workshop on this. And I think the gist is that the South Park pool is basically unrepairable. The cost to replace the pool, I believe, was in the $900,000 to $1,000,000 range. And just thought at the time it would be better to renovate the space into a usable space. They still haven't decided for sure what they're going to do with that space. But this at least fills the pool and turns it into a usable space. There'll probably be some more work that will have to be done next year on it. But this at least is a beginning.
Thank you.
And it's all within Jim's budget for this year.
Okay. Are there any other questions or discussion? Thanks, Sue. Okay, please call the roll.
Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Olmsted? Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Eliason? Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Motion carried.
Okay, Resolution Number Fourteen. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve the selection of Vinton Construction as a contractor for the track replacements at Oshkosh North High School and Oshkosh West High School to include the base bid and bid alternates A1 and B1 as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Mrs. Garner, I'd also ask that this one be pulled again. It's an important item. It deals with safety and our students. And I had just asked if we could have a very short description of what this is so that the public out there is aware of what we're doing tonight. Thank you.
Due to, I think, lack of resources, those two tracks have not... I shouldn't say they haven't been maintained to the level they should. It's just tracks over time deteriorate. And those two tracks have deteriorated to the point that they're not even safe to run on anymore. But because it's such a huge expense, it's really hard for Jim to put that in his budget. So that's why we ended up doing it this year. We're taking some fund balance to do it. But I think out of safety and out of those programs, it's too far. We had talked about only doing one and not the other. But when you're talking about kids having to travel across town to get to a good track, that that's not a good solution either.
Thank you, Mrs. Turner. Can we ask questions?
Sure.
Okay. So because they do deteriorate, is there now a plan to depreciate that over time so that we're ready when the next one needs to be?
That is a good question.
Okay.
I don't really have a good answer for that. I think that once they are both new, it probably is much easier to keep on top of things that go wrong. But like any facility, they do deteriorate with time. I'm not sure what the life of this is. I could probably get back to you with that information. But I think once they're new, it'll be easier to keep on top of smaller repairs each year.
We should note the fact that the alternates that were selected are of a quality that should result in a much longer life than had we only gone with the base bid. As Jim reports, the expectation for both ease of maintenance and long life will be greater as a result of the alternates that were added to this cost.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions?
I just had one more question about timeline. When are we looking to get this project done and started?
I think... Who did that? Oh, wonderful. Sure, good. That'd be great.
The plan is to start construction in late May, right after the middle school track season is done. And we need those fields inside the tracks by mid-August. So there's a quick turnaround. But if the weather's good, it can be done. So that's the plan. And the tracks were built in '95 and '96. And we've put minimal money towards refurbishing them over the years. And that's part of the reason we're here. But the base is so bad now that we're getting cracks. And a crack is one thing, but if the cracks then shift and you have a lip, you're in deep trouble. The one at West in particular is delaminated. And the latex, the rubber that they're laying on top, no longer will adhere to one another. And so they're literally running in spots on the asphalt itself. And asphalt in this area, if you get 30 years on it, that's amazing. So that's where we're at.
And in this case, it sounds like we had it last a little over 20 years.
Right. '94, '95, '96 is when the North and West tracks were both redone. To this, I mean, they're literally digging everything out and starting from scratch.
And for those who don't know, we should introduce the expert, Craig Leader, Activities Director at North High School.
So I assume the rest of the track season, then, will be at Kolf at UWO? Or are we still running on them?
We are using the outdoor track at Titan Stadium for the FVA and the regional meet.
Okay.
And West is not hosting any meets. We have triangulators and dual meets and quads within the conference.
Okay.
So North is hosting two of those, and West is not hosting any per design. They kind of asked and said, look, until that track gets redone, we cannot host any meets.
Okay.
And so the middle school, the majority of the middle school meets will be at North and either at the auxiliary track at UWO, or we might have to sneak one or two over at West just to get them in.
Okay. Thank you.
We had, I had some preliminary discussions. The athletic department at the university is also looking at replacement. But because of financial limitations in their process, we were hoping that maybe we could get a better price if the same contractor did three at one time. And I was trying to find a way to maybe make that work. But the university did not have the resources available in our timeframe.
All right. Any other discussion, questions? All right. Thank you. Please call the roll.
Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Olmsted? Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Eliason? Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Motion carried.
Okay. And Resolution Number Fifteen. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve a new two-year athletic cooperative agreement for girls hockey with non-district schools beginning with the 2017-18 school year as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education.
So move.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Mrs. Garner, I'd also ask that this one be pulled. As we looked at the superintendent's good news tonight, it struck me that we have so many wonderful programs in this district that many of us perhaps don't know about, like bowling and, in this case, girls hockey. And I just thought it would be good for all of us to have a very brief overview of what this particular resolution deals with.
Well, we're co-op-ing with a number of schools. Fond du Lac, Fondy Springs, Wapon, Campbell'sport, North and West, Kohler, Kewaskam, Beaver Dam, Wayland Academy, and Dodgeland. To all those schools, 11 schools, to make up a varsity girls hockey program. Beaver Dam and Wayland and Dodgeland were added this year. Beaver Dam had their own standalone program. A number of kids graduated. They had six girls who are still of high school age and looking for a place to play. Obviously, ideally, you need about 20 kids on a hockey program to have a varsity program. So Beaver Dam asked Fondy, the closest school, if they could join the co-op. Currently, this past year, we had two females from North and one from West play. Two of those girls will be graduating. So next year, we only have the one Oshkosh North girl that is involved with this co-op. But the deadline for the co-op is, for winter sports, is April 1st, so...
Thank you very much for sharing.
What's the feeder program?
The feeder program, it's a good question. At the youth level, some of the girls will play with the boys. But at some point, that kind of becomes unsafe. So kids can play here in Oshkosh. They can play in Fond du Lac, in all of the ranks. You know, Nina has a rank, Appleton has a rank, Green Bay has a couple of ranks. And so there are feeder programs. It's just, I think, girls hockey kind of took off for a while. And I think it's hit kind of a lull or a little bit of a valley, and I'm sure it'll spike back up. But that's, yeah, I mean, ideally, you wouldn't want to see 11 schools co-op-ing just to form one team. But that's kind of where it's at right now.
All right. Thank you.
One of the advantages, it does preserve the opportunity for girls for participation. And it's done at a rather low cost by sharing with that many school districts to accomplish that. I am always amazed that, in this area of Wisconsin, that hockey is totally different from my life experience in Minnesota where school districts of 1,500 students have complete boys' and girls' hockey and people waiting in line who get cut from the 20 starting lineup. So it's unique, but every community doesn't necessarily have a hockey arena or a ice arena.
That's true. Okay, any further discussion or questions? Okie doke. Call the roll.
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Evans? Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Motion carried.
Okay. Thank you. There's no individually considered resolutions, so we'll move to request for future agenda items. All right. Any announcements? It's a quiet evening. All right. So we're going to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of considering the employment promotion, compensation or performance evaluation of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction, or exercises responsibility, 19.851(c) Wisconsin statutes, A, consider employment performance of a public employee, and two, considering the disciplinary data of specific persons, 19.851(f) Wisconsin statutes, A, review expulsion recommendation from expulsion hearing officer for a high school student who engaged in conduct while at school or while under the supervision of a school authority which endangered the property, health, or safety of others and engaged in conduct which constitutes repeated refusal or neglect to obey the rules, 120.131(c) Wisconsin statutes.
So move.
Second.
Call the roll.
Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Eliason? Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Olmsted? Motion carried.
Okay. This meeting is adjourned.